Good evening, all. I have seven oh two to be exact, and I'd like to convene the Select Board meeting, public meeting, for September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, here in historic Town Hall and Sandwich. These proceedings are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. May we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda, is anyone here for public comment? Yes, sir. Over at the mic, state your name and address, and you'll have about five minutes.
My name's Edward Whitmore. I live at Three River Street in Sandwich. It's been the last three years.
Mr. Whitmore, is the, is the green light on?
It is now. There we go. Excuse me. For the record, my name's Edward Whitmore. I live at Three River Street in Sandwich. It's the old Cobb School Building. I read an article in the paper last week about a potential sale of the town annex building and what they may or may not be doing about ingress and egress to it. My only question for you, gentlemen on the board, is will there be some further public discussion on the options available there before someone decides what they're going to do with it?
We really can't have a discourse in the forum format here. I can hear your concerns.
So my concerns are on the record?
Yes.
That's a good stat. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening.
My name's Adam Jones. I live at Two River Street. Lived in town my entire life, and I'm obviously would like to hope that you guys will explore other options besides egress onto River Street, as it's not a great street. It would be right on the corner. I think it's not necessarily the best for traffic in terms of whether you do a left or right turn. If you drive down that street, you'll see it's not really, I would hope, not super viable as an option for us to have egress. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate your concern. Anybody else?
Good evening. George Ponce, Three Bedford Place, Forestale. I ran into Selectman George the other evening. I asked if there was any information that had been shared about the new HERO Act that was passed regarding the property tax opportunities for disabled veterans. He said it hadn't been brought up before and suggested I come here and make a comment. So with the recent passing of the HERO Act, an act honoring, empowering, and recognizing our service members and veterans in Massachusetts, Sandwich now has the ability to improve on the current disabled veterans' tax exemptions, which have remained the same for over twenty years despite the taxes going up every year. The new clauses are 21i, which would increase the amount of tax exemption annually by a cost of living adjustment determined by the Department of Revenue based on the Consumer Price Index. This will alleviate the exemption losing its value going forward. Twenty-two J, which will allow the minimum exemption to be doubled. Those veterans with a service-connected disability between ten and ninety percent, disabled veterans could go from four hundred a year up to eight hundred a year, and those veterans one hundred percent disabled would go from one thousand to two thousand. There were requests in here that you folks consider that. I would further request that you do a cost analysis to see what it might cost to the town so that it could be discussed appropriately. And I have a handout here. Would you folks like that?
Please.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, let's move on to review and approval of minutes for the meeting of September twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Mr. Hockter. Second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, three zero. Town manager report.
Some quick updates. Our meeting after tonight is two weeks from tonight, planned for October tenth. Couple of other things to update you on. I know several board members were able to come to a few, at least one of the sessions, but Attorney Michelle Randazzo from KP Law was down to give some overviews on the open meeting law and public records law two Tuesdays ago, so on September seventeenth. And we had a really good turnout at both, both sessions, so I just wanted to thank the volunteer board and committee members who came. Most of them came at night, but it was really helpful to have so many of them make the effort, and several staff were there during the day. So we've only heard positive things about it, and we plan to follow up on a couple of the issues that came up at those meetings. I'll just mention, just because it came up tonight on the HERO Act, it did get passed fairly recently by the legislature, and we're awaiting, usually when something like that passes, the Department of Revenue releases guidelines on how you have to interpret it and what the proper steps are. And so we've gotten some preliminary information from Town Council about it, but I don't believe we've gotten anything from DOR yet, but maybe the financial staff has. We did talk about it in our most recent financial staff meeting two weeks ago, and we're well aware of it. We want to do, just as Mr. Ponce had recommended, we want to do a quick analysis of what the impact might be, and then we can give that information to the board when it comes up. So more to follow soon. Tricia McDonald, our Recreation Director, just wanted me to announce publicly that the Hoxey House in Griss Mill last day opening will be this Sunday on September twenty-ninth. Originally hoped to make it through Columbus Day on the weekends, but don't have the staff right now to do it. So this weekend will be the last, last weekend for both those facilities. Paul might want to touch on this later, but Chief Keen and the Police Department did receive a state grant from federal funds for some traffic safety requests, specifically two more of those speed signs that are sort of a combination speed sign, plus it shows how fast you're going. And I know our Public Safety and DPW departments have been talking about where those would make the most sense to be placed. We do have three locations in town, but only one sign, so it's highly likely that the two new signs would go in the two other locations. But it also includes some money for speed and crosswalk enforcement. And then lastly, I just wanted to pass along that it appears we're really close to having the Section 111 project start. A lot of the official paperwork has been signed back and forth between the Army Corps and the contractor, Great Lakes Dredge. It looks like we're going to have a kickoff meeting internally, hopefully next Friday or shortly the following week. And then, once we know when people are available, then there may be a quick kickoff ceremony down on the beach with some of the higher-up officials from the Army Corps coming down. So whenever I know that's been established, I'll let you know. I know one of the things we've talked about internally, we need to, on the walkover stairs at the end of the boardwalk going over onto the beach, we have to remove those structures during the project, and then they'll be reinstalled after that. So, you know, we have some work to do on our end as well. I know they're starting near Treehouse and then working their way down. Without a doubt, we will be supporting them in terms of staging areas at the two town parking lots in that area, and basically whatever they need, we'll try to help them with. So in the past, things have gone pretty quickly, and where this is a different type of dredging, I think it'll be really interesting to see how it works and how quickly they go. It's, it sounds like they want to make hay and get the project done as soon as they can, so it's interesting. I did see a list of all the different boats and equipment and other things that they're bringing up, and it's like a dozen different vessels and construction things of all different sizes, so it's pretty interesting. And that was it.
Any questions for Bud?
No, just because I know in reading online, I just want to reinforce that the town is not paying for this project, that this is all being federally funded, this is not something that is coming out of our tax dollars per se here locally, but that this is a federally-funded project, you know, and that this is not something that we're doing ourselves.
Thank goodness we spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions, to get the permits and to renew them. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having a project to begin with, so that, we're very lucky the public supported that.
Indeed, thank you. Anybody else? Any correspondence, statements, or announcements? I have a few. On the seventeenth, as Mr. Dunham indicated, Sandwich conducted a public body training presented by Michelle Randazzo Esquire of KP Law. In short, anyone who participated came away with the understanding that the town of Sandwich will provide the public the most effective and efficient level of service with the resources available in a manner that exemplifies honesty, integrity, and commitment to public service while honoring our rich history, protecting our environment, and responsibly planning for our future. Then, on the nineteenth, the school safety committee met. There was an emphasis on how the school department is effectively working with Sandwich Emergency Services in order to address any issues that arise and maintain a safe environment going forward. The school safety drills scheduled, undertaken in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year will be maintained over the course of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year progress. On the twenty-fourth, Sandwich cares. Please be reminded, this group of solution-focused community members meet monthly at the Sandwich Library to discuss the efforts to address and prevent substance use and overdose deaths here in our town. This month, a presentation, Five Steps Together, given by Christina Russell of the Cape Cod Children's Place, Inc., was very informative, and contact information will be provided upon public request. Yesterday, the school committee met. Dr. Marushak presented a communication strategy for threats. Police Chief Keen attended in support and was a part of the presentation. A student support services update and a review of the new individualized education program form was presented by Director of Services, Mr. McNamara. Forestale School Principal, Mr. Dantino, Oak Ridge School Principal, Ms. Hill, and Sandwich Middle High School Principal, Ms. Nelson, each presented improvement plans for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. The plans were accepted by the school committee. Going forward, tomorrow, the peace pole donated by the Rotary Club will be formally accepted at the Sandwich Center for Active Living at two thirty PM. Then, Porch Fest and Sandwich Fest are Saturday, October fifth, from one to four. And that's all I have, folks. Okay. So if we can move on, then, to staff meeting. Director of Public Works, Paul Tilton, Town Engineer, Sam Jensen, Bike and Pedestrian Committee Chair, Sean Polley, VHB Engineer, Stephen Rhodes, in connection with the Cape Cod Canal Recreation Path to the Shared Youth, General Pedestrian Safety Efforts, Quaker Meeting House, and Ktuit Intersections, et cetera, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. I think you know the cast of characters here, next to me, and have all been very supportive in helping us advance a lot of the projects we have in Sandwich. Tonight, the main focus is, as you can see up on the screen, is the Shared Youth Path Extension from the Service Road down to the Canal Path. Steve Rhodes is going to make that presentation to you tonight. I would like to go over some other projects that we've been working on recently, and just to update you on the Service Road Shared Youth Path. As you probably noticed, it's nearing completion, a few more things to take care of out there. But Mast Dot just recently paved the top course this week along the entire length. Crosswalks and flashing pedestrian beacons are being installed right now. Some are up, they're not operational yet. Some additional ones will be installed next week or so. The new ramp configuration at both interchanges will be paved Monday night. Additional home seed and landscaping will take place over the next month or so. We still have some drainage work to accomplish out there, particularly along the slopes along that corridor. Just some of the grants and funding sources that we've been able to secure recently. We've had a lot of success in getting grants over the years, and we'll continue to pursue those as they become available. Bud mentioned the safety grant that the Police Department has, the two radar speed signs as well as increased enforcement for speed in crosswalks. We also just selected for Mast DOT's Vulnerable Road User Funding, and this program looks at improving safety along transit routes. In this particular case, it's on Ktuit Road. We put in a request for improvements at the three existing crosswalks out there. How much money and exactly what they are willing to fund, we haven't been notified yet, but we hope to work with them in the near future to get that funding secure. Another grant that we're going to apply for over the next couple of weeks is the Mast Dot Materials Grant. Basically, that grant will supply pedestrian safety materials as long as we make a commitment to install those materials. So we hope to get that grant in within the next week or so. Some other projects we've been working on, as you're all aware, the Route 130 Quaker Meeting House Road intersection is near completion. We're very pleased with the results of that. Sandwich just out there last week fine-tuning the signal timing out there, and it works quite well, especially for the school traffic entering and exiting their site. So operational and safety improvements out there were made, and we intend to install some of the landscaping features this fall and next spring as well. Moving down the Quaker Meeting House Road corridor, the next intersection project will be at the Ktuit Road intersection. We're working with a consultant right now to further the design for that project, and that will be similar to the Route 130 project with operational improvements, safety and pedestrian improvements, and bicycle accommodations as well. We're also looking at improvements at Town Neck Road, specifically finding a way to safely get pedestrians from Town Neck over to the existing sidewalk out there. Sam's been working on that recently, and we hope to come up with some options for that in the near future. We're also developing a crosswalk policy to address some of the safety issues throughout town at some of our heavily-traveled sidewalks and where we see a lot of crossings as well. And as I mentioned previously, we intend to start a public safety campaign. We will work with the Police Department over the course of this winter in an effort to improve safety for all users of our transportation network. We'll be meeting with the police to develop a program in this winter with the goal of introducing this plan before next summer, when traffic starts to pick up and things get a little crazy. So that effort will be, in a winners' campaign, includes education, social media blast, and other efforts to encourage the public to obey speed limits and drive safely. This will also be in constant with the Cape Cod Commission's Vision Zero Program, which also looks at improvement safety for all modes of transportation. The zero refers to a goal of ending all traffic-related fatalities on Cape Cod. So we'll be working with them, sort of on a regional effort, and hopefully a similar campaign will be made by other towns throughout Cape Cod as well. Before I hand it over to Steve, I'll see if Sam or Sean have anything to add. We've got a lot more projects we've been working on. The Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee has been great, helpful, and supportive with all these projects, and we look forward to working with them in future projects in the future.
I'm on. All right. I just want to highlight the Vision Zero, because I am serving as a representative on that committee, that regional committee, representing not only, obviously, Sandwich, but also I serve as the bike representative. And we are going to be hosting a public meeting here in Sandwich at the Center for Active Living on November twenty-first. I just got that email this morning. So we'll be participating pretty heavily in that effort to get public input and come up with a plan that can lead to funding for projects as well.
And very briefly, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and all your support with this. This project in particular that Steve is going to present on, I just can't emphasize enough how important it is to maintain high visibility so that this board knows where it stands and what direction we're going in, and the public as well. We encourage anyone that's interested in this project, that has any kind of questions or comments or feedback any sort, to reach out to the Engineering Department. I'd be more than happy to speak with them, and we would just encourage any kind of input. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me tonight. Just the logistics questions. Bud, do you want me to say, call next slide? And, okay, perfect. So if you have questions at any point, just feel free to ask. I don't need to run through this in any kind of set order. So tonight, we're going to talk about where the project is geographically, status-wise, the more local and regional connections that the project is going to enhance, what are the goals of the design and of the overall project. We're going to take a look at the current improvements, and lastly, go into our next steps that are coming up over the next year for this current grant round, and talk about some funding options that are in place. So same project limits that we've been talking about with you guys. I was here last September, actually, almost a year to date. So the preferred alternative that we're moving forward with is a connection from the Service Road path at the Route 130 and Route 6 interchange up to the Morse Road area, then crossing the state fish archery land to Route 6A. It'll follow 6A for a bit, and then turn off onto Tupper Road, and finally onto Freezer Road where it meets up with the Cape Cod Canal Shared Use Path facility. So this is a roughly three-mile-long route, but the goal of this is to provide a separated shared use path for the full length of that route. Regionally, this fits in, it's a key cog in the network of Vision Eighty-eight, which is the Cape Cod Commission's regional plan for the expansion of the bike and pedestrian path network on the Cape. We are already, you know, the town is already been part of that with the Service Road construction, and this is one important link that gets you up to the canal. Then we'll extend over to the potential future Shining Sea Bike Way expansion to connect to Falmouth. So that's one in the westward direction. In the eastward direction, we're actively working with Barnstable on the plan to extend the shared use path from its current terminus in Yarmouth. There's going to be an active construction project to bring the projects from Yarmouth into Barnstable. That'll start to happen in the next, likely start up in the next spring timeframe, or potentially over the winter. And then we're going to close that gap with the remaining length in Barnstable along Service Road to align with the Service Road construction. So the pieces are really falling into place at this point, which is great. And this is one of those, as I mentioned, kind of critical connections to fit that overall map. There's a number of local destinations and connections that this preferred route for the shared use path passes by, kind of going from north to south. We start on Route 130 at the Chamber of Commerce. We pass the Wing School area with the development there in the fields. There's a secondary connection to the village, there's no primary route through the village right now, but there's kind of secondary connection options. It'll pass right through the Jarvis Street and Tupper Road, Merchant Square area, cultural districts, secondary connection options to the boardwalk in Town Neck, and then lastly, as I mentioned, ending at the Canal Recreational Path in Town Marina. So Mast DOT has approved this project for state and federal funding for construction, which is great news. That approval has been in place, I think, just a little bit over a year now. That happened during one of the prior grant rounds with some help from the Cape Cod Commission in that project application. We've completed a number of public outreach and stakeholder rounds through the prior grants. This is really, I don't want to say it ends, it's ongoing. It keeps going with each phase of the projects until we get through a built condition, really. Wetlands have been delineated, so one of the major steps over the past year we've taken is to get a topographic survey completed by a professional land surveyor. So they now have done that for the length of the route, and VHB wetland scientists went out and flagged any wetland resources along that route. Those are picked up on the survey. We've started our conceptual design in the past year. We're continuing that now with the current grant round funding. And just to note, our last public meeting, the Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee hosted a workshop on June seventeenth, followed by an online survey, which we got some good results from, and we'll touch on that. So that survey was in place online for, I think, just under a week or so after following the public workshop. Had a really good response. Hundred and thirty-five responses were submitted. It asked participants to rank their design choice preferences in a kind of highest priority to lowest priority manner, and then there was also opportunities for open-ended feedback, and a lot of people submitted those. So one word cloud kind of example I just pulled off of our survey dashboard, the bigger the word, the more often it was mentioned. Safety is one kind of key theme there that we'll continue to see as we go through. The first question kind of took a global approach to the overall project and was asking people to look at the design objectives, ease of use, safety, level of comfort for the path users, preserving the existing roadway features such as trees, walls, any scenic features, and then avoiding potential impacts to abiding properties. So people were asked to rank those, one being the highest priority, five being the lowest priority. And this table is a tabulation of the number of counts that people ranked for those various selections, one again being their highest priority. We see safety had a number, a high number of number-one rankings. And then we kind of worked down through level of comfort and ease of use, got some good rankings in the two and three range, preservation of existing roadway corridor features, started to turn it off towards more of the four and five, the lower priority levels, and then avoiding potential impacts of properties. Pretty safely clocked in at, you know, lowest priority for these survey respondents. What we'll see on the next few slides is that that data didn't quite reflect when we cut into the local kind of segments level, so we can go to the next slide and we'll see some of that. So we asked three more questions for high-speed roadway segments, low-speed, and off-roadway segments. Again, looking at a similar kind of ranking of design alternatives, three choices this time, so one being the highest, three being the lowest. So we asked people where there is restrictive space constraints along the preferred alternative, how would you rank the following choices? And one, reducing the path in the buffer width, the buffer being the space between the roadway and the edge of the path, looking at the, getting a full path in kind of designed standard buffer within regardless of the impacts. And then, lastly, looking at, just looking to the road, can we do bicycle lanes in place of a separated facility? So on the high-speed roads, a lot of people preferred to reduce the path width to get past these constrained areas. Second ranking was the full path width and buffer, and a good sign, really safely, like the lowest priority people had, was shifting to the roadway. We don't really want to do that anywhere, that we can avoid it. From a funding perspective, it would be challenging to secure state and federal funding with that kind of segmented, separated, on-road, separated, kind of back-and-forth approach. So it was good to see feedback that people didn't really prefer to put people on the road. There was a lot of individual comments about safety and kind of path users' vulnerability next to high-speed roadway, so I think people made that kind of connection there. But there's some interesting data in here about how, we talked about the potential full width and then the reduced width and what people prefer. So that theme, if we go through the next slide, shows similar results on the low-speed roads. Again, providing on-road facilities, lowest priority, but kind of mixed between keeping the path width to the full extent possible and reducing the path width. And then on the next result would be the off-road segments. Similar numbers here, a little bit more split between the keeping the full path width and the reduced path width buffer. We had a number of number-one votes, fifty-four for the full width, fifty- But there's some interesting data in here about how, we talked about the potential full width and then the reduced width and what people prefer. So that theme, if we go through the next slide, shows similar results on the low-speed roads. Again, providing on-road facilities, lowest priority, but kind of mixed between keeping the path width to the full extent possible and reducing the path width. And then on the next result would be the off-road segments. Similar numbers here, a little bit more split between the keeping the full path width and the reduced path width buffer. We had a number of number-one votes, 54 for the full width, 59 for reducing, and then overwhelming, you know, providing, you know, on-road facilities would be a low priority to kind of avoiding the off-road segment essentially. Some of the data we took in from written submitted comments, some people had concerns with building facilities that will impact traffic, develop concern, any construction will obviously have some impacts to the, you know, the traveling public. One mention of the Wing School and the overall number of projects going on there and, you know, adding more and more projects in here. A lot of positive comments for the need for this path and kind of keeping the momentum of service road going now that the first phase has started. And then a lot of comments about kind of the connectivity of locally, regionally, that we noted earlier in the presentation. Some good comments, talking about parking lots. We're already starting to think about parking facilities now as we kind of enter into the next design phase. And then again, just a lot of emphasis on providing a safe route for this facility. So all comments have been reviewed and are going to be considered to the extent we can in the, to inform the design, and then all comments are also available on the Engineering website for anyone to view. Reminder on our design goals, again, a separated shared use path, so that's providing a target of a five-foot green buffer between the edge of the roadway that it's traveling aligned with and the edge of the path pavement, and then a 10-to-12-foot wide paved shared use path is what the project would construct. The scope of this will involve environmental permitting, cultural due diligence, which we're working on actively. We're going to introduce some traffic counts and some traffic analysis as part of this next grant round. We're going to look at the Route 6 corridor specifically with the idea of maybe some lane diets in there, and we'll work directly with the state on that since that's the state's roadway. We've got the land surveyed completed, which I mentioned, which is kind of the starting point of the design. The design itself is ongoing. We haven't reached any submittal milestones yet, but we'll get Mast UT on board with the stakeholder engagement to get them more connected in the design specifics now that they know the overall scope of the project from a funding kind of eligibility perspective. We'll get them more involved. We'll introduce a project manager to the projects from Mast UT's end and get them up to speed, and then we'll bring in the District 5 for viewers to the kind of specifics of the work we're planning. Quick look at what we have for products right now. So our land survey, just a screenshot from a computer screen showing the existing conditions, capturing trees, roadway edges, striping of the existing roadways, the right-of-way of the public space that we're kind of working in. And then on the photo on the right is just an example of kind of nodes and where we're flagging the boundary of wetland resource areas. This one is the corner of Main and 6A at the, within the state fish hatchery property. On the design side, this is kind of where we're working on a black-and-white plan, an engineered plan to lay out the path geometry, both kind of across the parcels and next to the road, and the grading of the path, kind of how it fits in with the roadway itself. So we're looking at that on the survey, which is kind of the grade-out background. And then how does this fit in the existing roadways today? So in a lot of segments, we have this scenario where we have some natural areas that are unbuilt, kind of unbuilt lots, and we may have a sidewalk on one side, we may have zero sidewalks. So this project is essentially going to drop in a 12-foot target with paved path on one side of the roadway, and that green space between the road and the path is kind of that separated buffer to kind of give people and bikers kind of a clear space from the roadway so they're not right up against the traffic. In a more developed area, we could have the path going along people's frontages. It'll integrate in with the area. A lot of times, we're looking at some sidewalks out there today that we can potentially widen. There's some opportunities, again, through our traffic analysis, to reclaim some current pavement space to bring a little bit more of that road edge closer to the center line and then reclaim some of the space that used to be pavement for vehicles, for heads and And then we're going to some on-the-ground photo simulations here. So this is Morse Road, looking at the fields, and the path here is a pretty easy drop-in on town property. On the right side of the screen there, you'll have some driveway crossings. We'll work around existing vegetation to the extent we can. There's some really, you know, nice mature trees out there today that we want to keep to the extent that we can do that. Jumping over to Route 6A, this is one of those scenarios where we have an existing sidewalk already in one side of the road, and we're going to look to kind of build that out to a width that's suitable for a shared use path and then tie that design into the existing frontages of these people's properties. And then on Freezer Road, another pretty, pretty level area terrain-wise, so no real problems grading here, we're just going to add the path in between the tree line and the utility poles here, getting, you know, some more driveway crossings built in, improvements to the flow of the vehicles using that facility so they're going to be aware of the path, and then ending at the canal shared use path here is at the very back end of that photo. So that's kind of our northern limit of work connection here. So as I mentioned, we're going to really begin ramping up the coordination with Mast UT in the design side of things over the next year. We're going to do that in concert with any input from the public and the butters that we're going to be getting. And then we're going to also work with the various stakeholders that are landowners and interested parties, Fish and Wildlife, we've already talked with and will continue talking with for the path alignment through the fish hatchery land, the Army Corps of Engineers for their ownership of portions of Freezer Road and the Canal Recreation Area, the Canal Electric Properties, since there are larger butter there that the path is going to cross in front of, and then of course, various local committees and offices. This grant round is going to continue, as I mentioned, to look at current traffic trends on the project area. So we have data that the Cape Cod Commission has maintained on a number of the project roadways, but we're going to get some current counts to kind of queue up for the first major design submission, which would be the 25% design submission. With those counts, we're going to also look at what is the existing crash data on these roadways to look for trends and see if there's some safety improvements that can be made as the shared use path integrates in with the kind of the built road environment. There's a Mast UT process called Intersection Control Evaluation that's going to have us look at if we're adding or removing any turn lanes from an intersection. We're going to have to go through a process to kind of vet that out with the state traffic engineers before we put that as a kind of submission goal on our 25% plan set. Specifically for that, the Route 6A at Jarvis Street is going to be looked at as a potential lane drop. There's the two travel lanes there, one for turns, one for through movements that are today. So we're going to look at the traffic counts, number of people that are using those turns, see what the impact would be if we were to have a combined through and left turn lane on that segment of road to kind of reclaim some space for the path. And as we go, we're going to continue to refine this design throughout the next year for approaching the pre-25% level. The long-term schedule is still dependent on what federal and state construction funding options are ultimately chosen. To date, the major design tasks have been funded by the state Mass Trails Grant Program. So there's been two prior grant rounds that the town has been awarded. That got us from the feasibility study through the survey, wetland delineation, and the initial design work. The current round is getting additional design work and all the stakeholder coordination that we just mentioned. We really anticipate the state to continue funding the design through the Mass Trails Program as part of a major component of the Vision 88. They look at that map when they decide which municipalities are high-ranking in their applications, so we don't think that's going to change going forward, which is good news. And then for construction itself, there's potential for this to be a state priority project, which would remove it from the local list of projects at the other Cape Towns, kind of get in a queue for the state and federal funding, or for it to go in that route of the local commission regional tip program. So that's still being worked out, but both options are on the table at this point. And with that, we'll be happy to take questions.
I know that it was raised before, but I know the, as far as the long-term maintenance of this path, is this something that we're looking to potentially get a turn back over to DNR so that they maintain this instead of the town maintaining this long-term from a, you know, fiscal, I guess it's more of a fiscal question?
We just had a meeting with DCR. I asked that specific question. In the past, they have been maintaining, taking care of them, and they still do some of them, but I think there's so many of them right now, and they're inundated with them, that they're passing that on to the towns. They will take care of the section that's state property, but anything that's on the town property and most likely within the Mast UT road jurisdiction will be on us.
Bud and I have talked about requesting to see if Mast Dot will help us with the service road maintenance, because a portion of that drainage is there from Route 6. So hopefully in the future, they'll work with us in that regard.
There is a good history of DCR maintaining the existing Cape Cod rail trail on the towns that's currently built in, and I think there's a desire to help communities as it's expanded westward. I think we just have to kind of see what state funding is available to do that, so that was, I believe that was part of what Dan just called DCR mentioned when we met. It's just kind of to be determined.
Right. Yeah, we'll put a request in at some point, hopefully work that out.
Is there a history of Mast Dot accepting a permanent responsibility for service roadside, et cetera?
I'm not aware of that. Patrick might be able to elaborate on that a little bit, but usually for the shared use paths is DCR taking over the maintenance of that. It remains to be seen if they will help us that. I would think that Mast Dot would be amenable to helping us with the drainage, because we sort of share the drainage facilities on, in between Route 6 and Service Road. So we intend to put that request in to them. I don't know if you have any experience in that, Steve?
Historically, the towns where the extension has been built to date have asked Mast Dot, and I believe it's always been turned to DCR for that kind of next level. So Mast CT is typically involved for the construction funding of the, you know, the project itself, and then, you know, barring special circumstances like project impacting drainage facility that they're, they have on their land, they're likely to kind of look to DCR at that point.
Okay. Okay. Actually, I was hoping for a different answer, but that makes sense. Thank you.
And DCR tends to take that on, especially when there's connectivity between the towns. Once it becomes a regional path, then there's more incentive for them. And it's actually probably better long-term that it be funded that way because then you're not competing with the on-the-road projects where there's a lot of competition.
I know, you know, one other question was that I had was, what was the projected timeline for us to finish our connection? Just, I know that's going to be the first question everybody asks, is like, okay, that's great, when can we do it? You know, what's the, what's the projected timeline for going from the service road to the canal?
I think on one of the slides here, I was kind of projecting the 25% design to spring of 2026. Does that sound right? So that's really a milestone design where it's the first complete design submission. That will include a full set of plans, a construction estimate kind of itemized out while the items that Mast UT will pay for. It'll include right-of-way plans at that point, so that begins kind of the process where the state and the town can start to review the impacts of temporary and permanent easement needs on properties. And then so if that's coming in in spring of 2026, that usually starts a clock of, you know, three to four, potentially more years of review and back and forth to get to and advertisement. And then it's also kind of dependent on when the funding year is available as well. So it takes time to go through the Mast Dot process, but, you know, it gets you a product.
At least five years.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, looking at this map, I think it's fair to say like we know better what our neighbors are up to, so I know Bourne's working hard on their portion, which admittedly has some pretty big challenges with the rail service and the base. So based on some of the meetings I've been at at JBCC, it seems like that might partially get worked on or resolved when the Bourne Bridge is really looked at replacement. And I know we're working on our section, and I mean, we've heard from our neighbors in Barnstable that they're working on theirs. Like any idea, like further down Cape, which, what's it roughly, Wellfleet-Truro and Province Town connection, are they, are they working on that as well, or is that along Route 6? So the state's doing it, or?
Yep. We're actually, we're working, VHP is working with Mast UT on alternatives analysis along Route 6. And there's one piece before it gets to Route 6 where we talked with DCR when we met last week about their experience in the Wellfleet connection from the railroad right-of-way out to Route 6. So there's one remaining segment there that they're looking to construct. They've just been waiting on a Mast Dot project to get underway, to get a safe connection from where that path will exit onto Route 6 up to the nearest intersection. So that's, that's going on, and yeah, it's just continuing to kind of look to make that last little orange connection up to Province Town, working with Mast Dot.
And then I think Paul and I have talked about this a little bit, but, you know, our work on our suppath on Service Road ends at the old Exit 4, you know, Great Hill-Chase Road area. I know at the time, Barnstable was thinking about doing some of their supwork sort of adjacent or part of the road as a bigger shoulder instead of being off the road. And I don't know if anything's changed really with that. I know once they hit like 149 and Old Stage Road, there's a separated path there already.
Yeah, so we are planning the facility in Barnstable to look very similar to what you've built on Service Road in Sandwich. Yep.
Great.
The terrain is pretty similar.
Yeah.
You know, challenging terrain to go through. So you really just kind of have this model where the path grade itself can kind of diverge from the road grade and dip and come up and all that. So that's, that's kind of our model for continuing in Barnstable.
And just to note, there is a short section of Sandwich that will be part of that study as well, from Chase Road to the Barnstable Town Line.
I mean, that'd be amazing when that's fully built. Pretty remarkable.
Any other thoughts or suggestions or anything the town would be doing, or?
I'll just add that we're going to emphasize outreach during this phase, so we'll be making a pretty strong effort to get out and get in touch with folks, and we welcome feedback. So this presentation will be available on the Engineering Department website within the week, and folks can reach out to us, can reach out to me directly, any questions, comments, feedback. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'll add one thing. We had that workshop back in June that was pretty well-attended, and we've done a similar workshop before where we filled the room at Sand Hill Community School. So we recognize that there's a lot of interest and engagement with this project. When we hold events like that, we really do welcome ongoing input. It's definitely a process that people should be involved in all along the way, and we invite that at our meetings and even outreach outside of the meetings. And I hope townspeople who are interested in it will keep asking questions and keep giving us input.
You think another public forum would help?
I think it will, and I think we're going to have one once we get past the Vision Zero meeting. We'll probably do something as part of this grant cycle as well.
Anybody else have any questions for these nice gentlemen? All good? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your time. Great presentation, Steve. Thank you. Potential special town meeting and draft list of articles November 18th.
Yeah, I know we've had this on the agenda for probably three or four meetings now. It really does make sense if we want that with, go before the public in May to take a vote on that this fall if possible. I mean, I think we've all realized, although there's other articles on here, it's really the wastewater focus that's important to keep moving forward on that. Just to run down the list that we had, tentatively it included the, if the board and the school -- and the school committee, you know, were in agreement to increase the school department appropriation and their operating budget for the additional Chapter 70 money. And I know the school has requested that those funds be used for building, maintenance and repairs. There's a vote we have to rescind where we didn't end up issuing debt for our wing school project. So it'd be good just to clear that off the books, even though it doesn't entail money. There's a question about an easement as part of the paperwork that was signed with the wing school issues that have come up about some utility connections and easements. So Town Council's reviewing right now to see if the vote that we took previously years ago to get permission to get rid of the wing school gave the authority about the easement. So we're looking at that. So again, I put things on here more so we don't forget them as opposed to like, they're definitely going to be there at the end. The CPA did express support, although they didn't take a vote about historic preservation funds to complete some cemetery restorations. And it's primarily focused on the Old Town Cemetery down Grove Street and the Cedarville Cemetery off Plowneck Road in 6A, focusing on restoring the, I don't know if it's wrought iron, cast iron, the fencing that's there. And it's not to replace it, it's to actually try to take it out, clean it up, make it look better and put it back. So the money was set aside for that years ago. Costs have gone up, so this would sort of come up with the difference between what we appropriated previously and what it looks like. And I know DPW supports it because we don't have that type of funding for, you know, in the cemetery trust funds, we should really save that money for when we have to expand the town cemetery. So that's one. I know I met with LeAnn Drake, talked to Paul about it. So I signed off on their application just to keep it moving. So I think the committee plans to vote at their next meeting, and then it would come back to the board if you were supportive of it. Where we supported it before, it just seemed like it was trying to finish the project. We've talked about those repairs that are needed on the front wall at Sandwich, entrance wall is probably a better way to say it, at Sandwich Hollow's clubhouse. And so to get the money for the professional services to do the assessment, it's not to do the work, it's to come up with plans and what the cost would be. Jones Road Culver project permitting, so I want to give you an update on that. We did get word that the extra permitting is estimated to cost about $125,000. We have roughly $100,000 left from our prior appropriation. So just to be safe, we're looking at $25,000 to $50,000, depending on what's needed. Right now, we haven't played fully on all the boardwalk bills, but we're almost done. And if you remember, we set aside some ARPA funding in case we ran short, and we haven't had to touch that. So we think there's going to be enough ARPA money probably to cover the difference. So that most likely won't be an article. Thing about the school department, the HVAC in the boiler, that was, Charlie and I attended a meeting with the schools to talk a little bit about their bigger picture capital plans. This all depended on if they were able to get the bids out again and when they could be opened and with the timing jive with when we would have a special. In the event, whatever the low bid was, if they got bids, couldn't be covered by the money that they've already appropriated. So it would look at trying to come up with a difference if it was needed. So there's a lot of if, ands or buts in that statement I just said. So I think we're still waiting to hear even if it's going to be able to be, the bids are able to be issued and received in time for that to make sense. So that's still up in the air, but that's listed there. Before I jump to the wastewater articles, I know Mr., I think it was Ponce was here earlier about the Heroes Act. If we wanted to do it, there's, there's different portions of it. There's different votes that are required. At least one town meeting vote is needed. So we're still doing research because this literally just, just came out, I think, within the last month. So we're trying to find out more about it. It probably would need a vote if we wanted to adopt it either at the special or at the annual next May. I would strongly recommend if we did it to make it effective for the start of a fiscal year, because we don't want to go back and, for lack of a better word, screw up the abatements that we already gave for people who are entitled to a veteran's exemption, because those have already been voted on and approved for the fiscal year we're in now. And then the three wastewater items we've talked about, the whiff surcharge trying to increase from 2% to 3%. I know there's a lot of reasons why we should and need to do that. And we'll explain all that assuming the special takes place. We should appropriate some of the balances in the existing whiff funds so we can keep those projects moving. And I want to stress especially those three projects at each of the schools. We're still waiting to hear back from DEP on our waivers for Oak Ridge and Forestale, but assuming we get those, there is work we have to do in the scheme of things, inexpensive work, but it's still work that we have to do to change some parts and some mechanical type issues. And obviously, the big one is the high school. I saw an email today from Sam through Wright Pierce about the project. We're, I think, at 95-plus percent design for the bidding of the high school, which is great. The system that was put in years ago, the company's name is Amphadrome, or that's the type of system. It's very proprietary. There's literally like one dealer in this whole region, not just this area. And so in order to make a sole source procurement designation on something that big, the board is supposed to sign off on that. And so that'll be in your, on your agenda two weeks from tonight with an explanation from Wright Pierce about why we have to do that. And then once that, that's ready, we should be able to issue the specs in roughly the November timeframe. So in the scheme of things, that's right around the corner. Most of that work would take place next spring, next summer. But it's, it would be great to get that, you know, finally we're getting some of the major wastewater work we need to accomplish. And then lastly, there is a portion of the state law that allows people to pay sewer betterments over a longer period than water betterments. And so that's something I think we should look at because hopefully when we start implementing this in the next five to 10 years with actual sewer connections, that will help residents and people who are tying into the system. Those are roughly what they're looking like. You know, my guess is two or three of those could easily come off once we get a little bit more information. But, but some of those ones, it would be nice to knock off before the annual. And certainly the whiff, I think it'd be nice to get, get some momentum on that headed towards May. I think you guys realize how much time we constantly spend on wastewater. But I always worry about like, you know, when is DEP or the Conservation Law Foundation or the EPA going to say, okay, Sandwich, you're not putting in pipes yet? And we'll remind them that we've been asking you for years for feedback on the pipes we want to put in, but you haven't told us. But, you know, at some point, we got to keep making progress just to show that we're serious about this. And we realize it's a 50-year project, but we really need to start getting pipes in the ground.
Paul, two quick questions, please. We're getting close to the timing.
Yeah. Technically, and this is weird, you can call a special technically, if we could post a warrant that fast, it takes two weeks before. Realistically, you know, to write, make sure you guys are good with it, Town Council's good with it, give the two weeks notice. I mean, usually the shortest week could be is about a month away. But I don't want to cut it too close because there's work that's needed on all these to, to put some of them to bed or to get more details on others. So, I mean, if you look at a calendar, that 18th really makes sense because it's between Veterans Day and, but avoids Thanksgiving Week when people could be traveling. You know, my guess, the items on here aren't that extensive in terms of presentations. It would probably be, you know, a fairly short meeting, but I think it's important to knock some of these things off.
Well, in that, we're two members short tonight. If we push this out until the, until the 10th, we're still?
You're still fine. I think if, if I knew you guys like were probably going to vote on it, I'd start drafting some of the articles just to get that process going. And that doesn't take long. Just, I think I should start writing, right?
I, I might recommend that, yes.
Okay, that's good.
I mean, I think, I mean, the conversations that we've had thus far, I think everybody knows this is coming. I'd, I'd be okay voting to have them start working on it, to have the special, because we know that some of these things, like the whiff is an important one that we have to have it in order to get it on the ballot in the spring to change.
All right. Well, we have Bud's input.
Right.
Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special town meeting for November 18th and proceed forward with the planning and execution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's go.
I just have one, one more comment and concern about the money we're spending on the high school system. And that is, I think that, I hope that there'll be another agency in charge of it at the time. And that by the time we complete the project, that it won't be under the domain of the school.
Oh.
That it has to be separately managed by a sewer department under, under the Board of Selectmen because of where the funding's going to come from to operate it. It's not going to come through the school committee. So even though they have care, custody and control of their own grounds, we're going to ask them to surrender that.
I, I, as Bud said, there's been some meetings and I, I feel an affection for that, what you just mentioned, that I think they'd accept it. But, you know, that's just one person talking, okay?
Okay. Yep.
And I think our goal would be to...
I'm optimistic.
Hopefully, like, I mean, just as an example, there's a private company running the base plant now.
Yep.
This is a really small plant compared to what they're used to. I bet you we could get a pretty good bid from them to oversee it, and that's what they do for a living. You know, that would be great. And I think in the long run, our goal is to not have a team of town employees oversee our wastewater system. We will probably have to have two or three employees like really overseeing and interacting with the public because we'll be responsible for the billing. But personally, I don't want to have any part of it, running it with town employees.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
But I think we just don't want to create a facility and have it be an orphan.
Yeah, it's true.
It has to be within the umbrella of the town.
Yeah.
In terms of its administrative oversight.
Yeah. In a weird way, it'll be good practice for the bigger issue, too. And I think, I think all these, like, all the seeds will be sown even when we get the waivers, because I'm sure we'll, you know, through Dave Mason and others, we'll probably be overseeing the physical conversion from the plants at Forestale and Oak Ridge and go into a normal Title V system, at least at Forestale temporarily until we can hook up.
Yeah, I, I probably shouldn't say it again, but pardon my optimism. I'm, I'm optimistic that we can make an arrangement along those lines.
Yeah. I don't think there's any desire there for them to do it.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, you could say it that way, too. Yep.
And I'll add just on the wastewater front, you guys might be interested. So we continue to outreach with Senator Moran, Representative Xaros, and Representative Fernandez as well, because he was actually on the committee that that special act was with that got referred out. So I only know because I've looked at it recently. It's now in the Committee on Third Reading at the State House. And that's typically when the state departments and state attorneys look at it closer. So we're just trying to get, get that moving, because believe it or not, it's been two full years since we voted that, and it's just sat there for the most part. So I actually sent an email today, a long one, to Deputy Commissioner of DEP, Gary Moran, who's been really engaged in meetings, large meetings we held over the last year, year and a half. You know, and one of our constant requests was, can you send a letter of support about our special act? And can you give us some general feedback about the base? Because I think we still all feel that that makes the most sense financially and environmentally. But we know there's a lot of hurdles to go, you know, and tough, tough roads to get through permitting and everything else. So that went out today. And then I made sure to copy our, you know, our senator representative. So we'll see how that goes. But it's frustrating because like we want, we really wanting to start doing more. And at least with the schools, we're, we are actually going to do something. So that's good. But it should be nice to start working on that bigger project. And we talk every month with Converge and ASUS. So, you know, they're, they're pushing things as well on their end. And we did send a letter of support. They've formally asked the Army Corps of Engineers to consider additional acreage along the, technically Route 6A along the canal on the base side where the current rapid infiltration basins are, another roughly 45 to 50 acres near there to site new ones because there's PFOS contaminations in the current one. So we sent a letter of support along with the base. So we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
So we're trying.
Okay. Yeah. A progress of a kind. And, and just, if I can dial back for a second, though, to Article 6 on the proposed warrants, wrought iron, I don't think that's a problem.
The cemeteries, the fencing.
You brush it and paint it, right?
Yeah.
Like sandblast it and then...
Well, okay.
Some of them are broken.
Okay. Right? Okay.
Is that the same one that we voted on like four years?
Yeah, I think we...
Yes, it is.
This is rough. I think we appropriated about 50.
Yeah, I thought that's what...
We've spent a little bit, but the cost is higher. So this would, I want to say it's about 140, I think.
Yeah. I think they take the wrought iron, they take it, they strip it down with, you know, bead blast. I'm assuming they're doing, they're taking it off-site because potentially some of the old paint might have had some contaminants in it. And then repaint it and prime it and bring it back. Yeah.
Get rid of the lead.
Yeah.
For example.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. I guess we're on the same page then. Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Let me move on to the select board meeting schedule.
I just wanted to mention, I know Charlie and I have talked about it. So technically, a special town meeting counts as a public meeting of the board, but it'd be a pretty big gap between regular board meetings in light of the holidays in November. And so one of my thoughts, and I haven't, just something to think about, if Heather and I go to that Fall Conference on the 21st, that's a Thursday, we would probably leave that morning. You know, we could do a meeting the night before possibly, which would be two nights after the special. But I don't think the special will go, you know, till 11 or anything. So who knows? Just a thought.
Myself, yes. I'd like to maintain that my monthly meeting, yeah.
And the holiday is the 28th, it's Thanksgiving. All right, I'll add that to the list.
Thank you. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, I have none.
The only thing I had was, did we get any feedback from the state on those liquor licenses that we have?
Yeah. So first, when you guys voted that the language...
Right.
We needed a certified vote. So Melissa worked with Taylor, we got that up, and we got confirmation like yesterday that they have it. So, I mean, they've got everything they need. Now it's, you know, waiting for their votes.
Okay. New business. Recommended Historical Commission appointment of Bob King. There's a letter in our packets that's in support, sent by Mr. Clayder, who's the chair. Any further comments? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to motion, I'd like to recommend Mr. Robert King as an alternate member of the Sandwich Historical Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you yet again, Bob.
Right?
Just when you think you're out.
Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, I, I have no thoughts at this time about other agenda items or anything. Well, I have none then. Second opportunity for public comment. Sure?
You get two bites of the apple anyway. You get two bites of the apple anyway.
Just so I can state the rules, though. At your second bite at the apple, you're down to two minutes.
Okay, that's fair. It's because I take about 20 seconds. You know, when they get the boardwalk, I know that was something that was a big deal for a lot of people. And I'm not gonna lie, I love the old boardwalk, so I was super excited, loved to do it. But they did a great job. Someone said that they had a warranty, I don't really understand all the details. Someone said they had a warranty on the boardwalk and its construction. I was just wondering, you know, the initial excitement, they were so happy about how great it looks, that we kind of overlooked. And I walk in every day very much. And I was just wondering, maybe I'm OCD, if there was some way to have people review. Because you could tell you had different people doing the screws. And I know it sounds stupid that you could barely, like, when you're walking, you just got... My thing is, I'm not a builder, you know, somebody who has a lot more knowledge than I do. I was just wondering, is that something that over time, it's not going to affect our warranty because we're getting a pass warranty and we're going to start having problems with the boards down the road. But you can see some of them are set, you know, a millimeter, two millimeters under, some are a millimeter, two millimeters up. It doesn't sound like a big deal, but you can see whole stretches like from me to the button that are up. And like, you could, I'm not worried about submitting for a trip. I just think maybe that's something we can address with them, have some review and look. And they can go and set those down like they should be set down. I even want to say River Street, but I'm really happy I got my 45 seconds there. And I had people emailing me about River Street because I'm certain enough people wanted to be concerned about this. I would have said so much more if I had planned, I was told to have been prepared, and I was not. But I would have really been great thinking for a second, but yeah.
We appreciate your comments and we'll make a note. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen, and I live at Pete's River Street. And we've lived here for 18 years, June 30th last year. And raised our children, like two of which are here for the weekend. That town hall dance has always been hot. And it should stay that way because the waiting for drive, first of all, in this town, but on River Street, you're going at like 40, 50 miles an hour from the mountain, or a tower, it's insane. So if you open that up, you're just looking for NASA. And I don't know how much of a surprise or hasn't already been one. But you open that up and you have traffic coming everywhere. Honestly, our, like, as an image we've already discussed, we should probably be in the wrong way to do it. I think you probably wouldn't like that. But it's so dangerous. So I know that you want to sell the town hall and I serve up to what will make the town money. But you open that up, you're just looking for trouble. So I say, leave that. Mr. Ellis did it for a reason, by the way. He owned the house that put it up. And he did that on purpose. So I said, you have to...
Actually, it was done after I left. After, it was done after 1996 when I left my town position. So I wasn't involved in the, I was happy that it happened, but I wasn't involved in its placement or that project at all.
Okay, so...
It was Mr. Tilton who was here earlier this evening, or Mr. Tancredi, I think, was town engineer at the time.
So it was in there before 2006.
Oh, yeah, oh, certainly, oh, yeah.
So I think it's...
I think it's a good idea.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but we shouldn't be interacting. We've heard the concern and we'll take it into consideration.
So can you...
Thank you.
How do we know when the next meeting is? I know I missed the first one, but...
Well, yeah, there was a forum, too, that you missed.
Okay, so how do I make sure I don't miss the next one?
I can only suggest that you keep your eye on the agenda.
I just want you to know, I really had to stand up and walk driveway with my children to be safe. Last Halloween, cars were flying in. My children actually yell at cars so that...
Well, yeah, you should be using the mic and your five minutes is up, I'm sorry. But if you have anything specific to say, okay.
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
I have a second.
Sure?
10 seconds. I just want to piggyback off what she was saying and that I do understand the argument that, you know, opening that up...
Name and address, just so everybody hears.
Sorry, I went in jacks a bit, also the one on River Street. And I do, I do understand the argument that opening that up could increase the value of property in the East, like me. But I don't think that difference is big enough for it's outweighing what I can have on the people who would share for it. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. You as well. Closing remarks, Bud?
Just one quick one I should have said in my report, and I know it's Publix now, so I can say it. But our Director of Planning and Development, Ralph Attacco, who's been in that position for seven years, was recently appointed the Town Administrator in Dayton. And he told me today, he signed the contract today. So he'll be here for roughly another three, four weeks, three weeks, and then he'll be heading to Dayton. But we can't thank him enough for all he did for us. And Dayton's very lucky to have him. And I know a lot of his coworkers will miss him a lot, but we know he won't be a stranger, so.
And what is, what's his position there?
A town administrator.
A town administrator.
Yeah.
Excellent, that's a nice town.
Yep.
Indeed, congratulations, but he'll be missed.
He will.
Anybody else for closing remarks? All right, my, let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, and the overall threats to world peace in our thoughts and prayers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockter, second by Mr. Ellis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Our next meeting is Thursday, October 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in Historic Town Hall. Thank you very much.